We'll go ahead and call to order the City Council regular meeting agenda. Cheryl, would you do the roll call, please?
Yes, council members Hannah, Gremeyer, Bash, Mayor Pro Tem Hoffman, Mayor Newton, all present.
Thank you. We will now recess to close session. Good evening, once again. I'd like to reconvene the public's session. We'll have a report of actions taken in closed session. John?
The City Council considered the matter listed on the agenda, and there are no reportable actions.
Thank you. We'll now have the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilmember Hannah, and then if you'd remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Erwin Diaz.
(Pleading) Father, who dost thou give us the truth, and teach us the good things, and the good things of the Lord, and the good things of God, and the good things of liberty and justice for all.
Evening.
Evening.
Thank you for having me here for this opportunity to open this meeting in prayer. So if you would bow your heads with me. Dear Lord, we just thank you. God, we thank you for this great country, Lord, and I thank you for the city of Norco. I ask that everything that is done here in this place today, Lord, that you would have your hand upon it, Father God. Lord, I thank you for the families, the individuals, the businesses, that make up this great city of Norco, and I ask for your outpouring on this place, prosperity, and just a wonderful life for everyone that's here. So, Lord, I pray that these things on the agenda today, God, that each one of them would be worked out, there would be resolutions, obstacles would be removed, Lord, and progress made, and we thank you, God, that you are here and that you are over this place. In your name we pray, amen. Thank you.
Gosh, Pat. And are those representatives here? And would you like to say a few words? Sure you do. Right there.
And the poppies, the story is that, and I'm sure it's true, that the veterans, um, So California State Flower, you know. Got a membership thing. That's been their family. They need, you know, and there's not enough money. Anyway, the poppies are important to me. I lost my husband, and he was in the service.
So we'll skip all the whereases.
Okay.
And I'd like to give you this proclamation. Seventeen has napped.
That came from Washington, okay, guys? That day.
And that came from Norfolk.
And thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And I'm gonna ask my colleague Kevin Bash to step down. I know this is near and dear to you. So... Come on up.
So what you see here are Blue Star Moms, who all have children in the service, and they asked to have a very special day, and I'm gonna have one volunteer tell us about what this special day is, whoever it is.
Good evening, everyone. It is such an honor for us to be here with you today. We are mothers of sons and daughters serving in the military, and we also have in our group, we have Gold Star Mothers, and Gold Star Mothers are those who have lost their sons and daughters while serving in the military. And we are so excited that you are having this special Red Proclamation Day, and every Friday is honored as Red Day, where we hope all of you will wear something red, whether it's your red shirt, whether it's your red hat, whatever you have that's red, please wear it, and it shows support. It shows support for our military, and I know everyone here, being from Norco, you are so supportive. We have been to so many of your events, at George Ingalls Memorial, and all the things you do, it is just so honorable. But we just wanted to thank you so much for all you do and for having this special proclamation for Red Day. Just a little one last thing. Saturday, we're having a collection for our care packages. Every year, we send thousands of care packages to those who are serving, who are deployed. So if any of you have addresses where you'd like to send us a care package to your loved ones, if they have an APO or an FPO address, we would love to send a care package to them. And we will be at Sam's Club Saturday from 9:00 to 4:00, and we will be collecting items to put in our care packages. Thank you, city of Norco, we love you.
Somebody else wanna speak? You sure?
So I'm gonna kiss, I'm gonna skip the whereases. RED is an acronym that stands for Remember Everyone Deployed, which began with an email chain back in 2005 to show support for our servicemen and women. And RED Fridays is a nationwide initiative created to remind people of our heroes overseas and show that we are thinking of them, and to visibly demonstrate community solidarity and support of our servicemen and women. And by wearing red every Friday, the city of Norco, does this count? Is this close, sorta? Is announcing, it's in the family. Is announcing that we are forever grateful and appreciative of our past, present, and future soldiers for their bravery and sacrifice, and many are paying the ultimate sacrifice defending this great country we all love and call home. And without their service and patriotism, we would not have the liberty of living in a free country. You can see why you have me reading this. It's not easy, is it? Red Shirt Friday is not just an initiative to display our gratitude to the millions that serve our country, but also an effort to show appreciation for their acts of selflessness and to remind the families of those we have lost, that they will never be forgotten. And the city of Norco encourages all residents and visitors to wear red on Fridays to recognize, honor, and pay tribute to our veterans, active-duty armed forces personnel, and troops that continue to proudly serve our nation for our benefit. Thou therefore, he Greg Newton, Mayor of the city of Norco, on behalf of our City Council, do hereby proclaim Norco as Red Shirt Fridays. I think that's fantastic. I think that Norco, it's very appropriate that Mr. Crook is sitting there, because Mr. Crook was a key component to building the memorial. We'll be talking about that in a minute. And one of the things that the Veterans Memorial Committee that oversees the Ingalls Veterans Plaza is working on a Gold and Blue Star Mother, not really a memorial, but a place that people understand that the moms go through a lot. So if we get this completed, and I think we will, I'm sure we will, we tend to do that, we'll be the only one in Riverside County, and one of maybe one in Southern California, that recognizes them. So, very proud to do that. There you go. Mr. Mayor! Oh, wait. Come on over here, Mr. Mayor.
Horns among the roses.
Thank you. Thank you so much, guys.
If I can have Fred Cook come up to the front here, please? Good evening, sir. If you can just stand right over here. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Scott DeRosa. I am the Vice Chair for the EDAC Council, which is the Economic Development and Advisory Council for the city of Norco. In a joint venture, EDAC works with the City Council to try to find businesses that have done something special or unique for our city, and we want to acknowledge them, bring the spotlight to their attention for what they contribute to our city. We have a lot of great businesses here. It's really, really a hard task trying to figure out who we should put the spotlight on. But tonight, we are here to honor a company by the name of Quick Creek Products, because they've done some, an amazing contribution to the city with regards to the memorial plaza. And it seems appropriate, being that this is Memorial Day weekend coming up, that we should honor them. So, Mr. Cook, who is the founder and CEO, I'd like to present you this award.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
And I'd like to go ahead and read what that says. "The city of Norco hereby honors Quick Creek Products for its long-term commitment to Norco, where the company embodies the spirit of 'Made in America.' Quick Creek's dedication to the community, represented by its donations to the George A. Ingalls Veteran Memorial Plaza, is indicative of the company's generosity." Sir, thank you so much, we truly appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Up, stay up here. Would you like to say a few words?
Well, I'm not a very good speaker, but I've picked Norco for my location, for my factory, and that was quite a few years ago. One of my main reasons was I knew the 15 was gonna be built, and there was a lot of property here, and I've been a horse person all my life. I love horses. I just got bucked off a horse that I thought I've lost some little brain power upstairs, but I'm still walking, chewing gum. But I love this town, they've been great to us. It's been very good for our trucking company. We manufacture architectural precast concrete. We ship all over the West and even all over the country, but in our own trucks, only in the West. So it's a great place, 15 to go north and south and all that kind of stuff. So I've loved it, they've been great to me, and so I have to, I like to show my appreciation. Thank you.
We're gonna do with everyone? No, let's do this first. Okay. Scott, and your plaque?
On the front.
Though the next photo I'd like to see is me driving off in that black Corvette that you pulled up into. I'm gonna have Ted, you're gonna do this presentation, but one thing I did wanna thank you for, and just one of these little things that you don't see what our businesses do for us, years ago, all our volunteers, we built the Corydon staging area, and that little shelter that you see there with that precast picnic table was compliments to this gentleman.
Thank you. Oh, boy.
Because you're a very humble person. You never showed up to receive us over a year ago. As the Chairman of the George Ingalls Veterans Executive Committee, we would like to present you this award for your donation in helping us build the George A. Ingalls Veterans Memorial Plaza.
Thank you.
We couldn't do it without you. So everything you have done for this community, for our city, and for the residents here, thank you very much. That's all I can say. The words don't mean that much. But this is a...
Thank you very much.
Guess we'll just stay on a roll. Tony Beretto. You wanna be on this side, that side, buddy?
Hello, council, hello, Norco. We want to...
You wanna be the volunteers up here with us?
Honor the veterans with the volunteers that have served, and they have the flag that we're gonna donate in honor of all the veterans to the memorial. So come on up, please.
Wasn't sure if he's gonna bite me.
No, he's not. He's gonna lick you.
Our council doesn't have very good luck with dog bites. Come up, Jeff.
I'm not a veteran, I would just help.
But you're part of the memorial, so...
Step up.
Thank you.
we also have a check that we wanna donate to the animal shelter. So would you come on up, and we can present that?
That's a secret. Okay, Frank.
They've been really good this year. So, we did this year.
Don't go away, Tony. I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank Tony personally. This is truly an animal-loving community. I've lived here almost my whole life, and this is just a testament to people donating back to the community, to the shelter. This is a huge amount of money. Every year, Tony doesn't have to do this, Horse Week doesn't have to do this, but himself, his staff, his volunteers, they do this every single year. They donate back to the animal shelter, and every year, it's a larger sum. And I just, I'm almost speechless on the amount this year, and just wanna thank him, my staff thanks him, and I think it's safe to say, all the animals, thank you. This goes a long way for feeding, bedding, medicines, vet care for all the animals. If you've never been to the shelter, it's more than just dog and cats up there. There's a menagerie of animals, literally. But thank you from the bottom of my heart, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
I'm gonna bend the rules a little bit more, if I can. I'd like one more presentation, and that's from our folks from Disney. You also, Roy. Okay. Roy. Much nicer.
Well, good evening, everyone. My name is Alexa Garcia. I am one of the Disney ambassadors from the Disneyland Resort, and I am here to officially invite you all to the dedication and open house of the new Circle D Ranch that is coming here to Norco. We are very excited about it. The event will be June 10th, if you don't already know, and there's going to be a ribbon-cutting ceremony that will start promptly at 10:15. Alongside Mayor Newton, of course, will be our Vice President of the Disneyland Resort, Mary Niven, and my fellow ambassador, Disney Ambassador, Mikey Trujillo, will be there as well. Following the ribbon-cutting, of course, from 11:00 to 1:00 p.m., we will go ahead and open that up to the Norco community, for everyone to tour some of the areas of the ranch and see how we care and train our horses that are getting ready to entertain and transport our guests up and down Main Street, USA, at Disneyland Park, all the time over there, and they make magic. There are some of our favorite cast members over there. So we hope to see everyone there. It should be a lot of fun. Thank you so much for welcoming Disney and to your family. We're so excited to be here and a part of Norco. I couldn't think of a better place for our horses to be living now. So thank you so much, and we look forward to seeing you all on June 10th.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll move into City Council Communications, reports on regional boards and commissions. Berwin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First off, with RCTC, we had our meeting last week. Most of it was about budgets, and we did approve some contracts on the I-15 corridor, which probably won't start construction until about January or something, but it's moving right along. We don't have any right-of-way issues like we did on the 91, because all the expansion's gonna be made joining the two sides together, the northbound and southbound sides together. It's gonna be joined in the middle. And if you look on the other side of the, on the south side of the 91 freeway, you can see how they joined that section. That's pretty much done over there, and it was simple compared to what the 91 was. RTA meeting was about the same, it was all budget material. I think I mentioned the last time, we voted to buy five new trolleys. I think you saw the trolley, one trolley we have in the Horse Week Parade, but some of those trolleys are over 25 years old, so they're gonna replace them. And, excuse me, last October, we had the bus rodeo down at the Hemet Station, and the board members got to compete in their own little obstacle course deal, but the drivers that drive full-time for RTA competed in a separate contest, and it's a much tougher obstacle course, and the guy that won it, the driver that won it, has won it three years in a row, and they have the finals, national finals, every year at Reno, and he went two weeks ago, and he brought back the trophy for the world championship bus driver. And after competing in that little rodeo division of ours, you gotta have a lot of respect for these people that are driving the RTA buses through the traffic and what they do every day, so it's a whole different ballgame than driving your car. Vector, it's about the same. Every meeting is talking about the mosquito control and trying to get a handle on all the new diseases that they bringing in and everything, and we have, that's all I had to report on them. We have that meeting tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Berwin. Robin?
Just like to invite everyone to the Unload Committee meeting on Monday at 5:00 at City Hall. Again, if you're interested in issues that affect our young people and how we can effect positive change, I would definitely encourage you to be a part of that meeting, and that concludes my report.
Thank you. Ted?
All right. As I said earlier, I'm the Chairman of the Executive Committee for the George A. Ingalls Veterans Memorial Plaza, and I wanna invite you all to our May 29 salute Memorial Day presentation. We are finalizing the program, we did, and one of the things that's unique is we are going to be inducting, I guess, or inscribing, three Navy nurses who died during World War II that were stationed up here and at the Navy base and who lived here in Norco. So we're very honored to do that, along with having our junior ROTC program, and the young Marines will be doing our 21-gun salutes. We're very happy and very proud to incorporate that into our program this year. Like my fellow councilpeople, attended the Town Hall meeting last Monday night, and it was a very informative session, and I'm sure that if you ask each one of us individually, we'll give you something to say about it, but it was very good. I was very happy with the turnout, like most of the other councilpeople. We were very happy, there was a good crowd there. I have attended this last two weeks. Brian Petrie had all five LMD resident property owners meet at various dates and times. Not such a good turnout, unfortunately, at each one of the meetings, so we've gotta get the word out, get our residents there, so they can give us input to see, help them on the LMDs. We had five LMDs cover almost 1,000 homes, and we get eight property owners there, so we need to work on that, people. Go ahead and get the word out. Councilmember Hannah and myself met with the Southern California Edison regarding the Circle City Electrical Project. It's gonna be a power, new transmission lines being brought from the Merrill Oma Station all the way through to Corona. They will be having public hearings in the near future... They will be having public hearings in the near future as they go through all their scoping meetings and stuff, so we'll keep you apprised on that. We got an interesting perspective from them on the journey, on the route that's going to be taken and the journey through Norco. So, it's not as scary as we thought, but it's still something that you need to be aware of. Again, I'm also the Chairman of the Day of the Cowboy in July 22nd, so look forward to seeing some mules there. We're going to have mule chariot races and mule chuck wagon races there this year, we're going to highlight the mules. We also, three of us, attended the League of Cities Meeting in Riverside. Carolyn, is it Carolyn Coleman? Carolyn Coleman was there, she's the President of the California League of Cities. Very interesting woman to listen to, has a lot of good thoughts. She comes from the National Office, and I'm glad that we're part of that organization. They keep us in tune to what's going on in the various aspects of what Sacramento is doing and new ways to help our cities out. Kevin and I went to the Southern California Association of Government Conference in Palm Desert, and it was hot. But, for two days there, we were there, one of the interesting sessions we attended was preparing for cities, is how do you prepare infrastructure for large venues? And they were specifically talking about sporting venues, and we thought, well, with Silver Lakes to our north, that we needed to make sure that we're doing it the right way. They interviewed guys from the new soccer complex up there that's being built in LA, along with the Olympic Committee people. So, I think we're on the right track, we're just doing it a little smaller scale, that's it. And then Kevin and I also attended the Junior ROTC banquet, and I'm very proud that one of our Commissioners, Grant Holder, her son was named Cadet of the Year for the Junior ROTC, and then also one of our employees, Myrna Packerman, she was named as one of the Junior ROTC Mothers, so very proud of the fact that we... Oh, that's right, all right, I can talk about it? All right, so, and then also Myrna's son, Aaron Packerman, is the recipient of the James Evans Scholarship Award, which Kevin and I are part of. So, we really appreciate the effort that our residents and our city employees put out here. So, that's all I have to say, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted.
So, Ted pretty much touched on everything. The only, I, Brian Reese spoke at the Town Hall the other night, and kind of what got lost in him looking for a way off of that campus is that he's in the process of, I don't know if people know this, but the Norco College is actually in the top 20 for veterans education in the nation, and he wants to make it number one. His goal is, within five years, he wants to have 6,000 veterans that are utilizing that campus to transition from active duty into the private sector, and I'm very excited about that, and it looks like it's really going to happen. It's very, it looks like it's very well-funded and they're moving forward on it, so they'd like to build a separate building for it. Other than that, he pretty much covered everything. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Okay, so on May 4th, I attended the Chino Basin Desaltra Authority. Give you a little bit of good news. We reconciled the allocation of cost for fiscal year 2015, 2016, and we will be getting a small stipend back, $64,186. So, that was good news. And then, last week, I took a tour of the Navy Base Detachment in Norco, and we went over some of the facility projects that they're proposing and that they're working on, and spent a couple hours out there. We drove around the site and we looked at the different access points that the college had considered, and then toured some of the remodels that they've completed. And so, all in all, very interesting. And then last week, met with city staff, Sheriff's Department, Cal Fire, and we had our first scoping meeting on how we're going to be dealing with the upcoming 4th of July and fireworks. And later in the evening, Eric, if you want to comment on that to council, feel free to do so. Okay? And that's all I have. Moving on, City Council Consent Items. Council wish to pull any items?
Item F.
F?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to pull the number C.
C?
Mr. Mayor, letter E, please.
Okay, so we're going to pull C, E, F. Motion to approve the rest.
Councilmembers Hannah, Grunmeyer, Bash, Mayor Protem Hoffman, Mayor Newton. Motion carries.
Just go in order. Item 2C, Ted?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, the reason I pulled it, and we had done dealing with the accessory building program for so long, and I just wanted to reiterate, I'm very glad of the work that staff was doing on that, trying to utilize the Architecture Review Committee in that action on the, the large garage on the Planning Commission's Agenda C for that night, under Condition Use Permit 201639. I think they did a very good job. Again, I just want to reemphasize, and maybe Steve could elaborate, his, the action of the ARC on that, so that people understand that we're what we're trying to do on these programs, on these buildings.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Yeah, this action that the Planning Commission took was actually a little bit of a backwards action compared to what they typically do, because what they typically do is try to get the applicant to introduce more architectural embellishments, to introduce more of a Western, equestrian theme, and more elements to match the residence. And in this case, they, the property owner actually went, they did a lot in terms of adding a lot, a lot of features to the house to make it look like the primary residence of the house. Problem is, they already have a second unit on the property, and this looks so much like a house, they felt it might be tempting to future owners to turn it into a third house, so they made them tone it down a bit and make it more like an accessory building, actually, so.
Again, I want to compliment the work of the ARC and the Planning Commission on that, that they've taken the spirit of what we've been speaking about for the last couple of meetings. So, with that, Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve.
Councilmembers Hannah, Grunmeyer, Bash, Mayor Protem Hoffman, Mayor Newton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
2E. Robin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chad, I need some clarification, please. So, in the staff report, it talks about requesting the 357,640, which includes the company performing a CEQA review, and then under Task Number 3 in their scope of work, it talks about the project may fall under a categorical exemption, so is this something where maybe we'll find out that we don't need to spend the money, but we're allocating it right now?
Yes, they'll first do the initial investigation. If it does qualify, which I doubt, it will qualify for no exception, then we have the second part, which is the CEQA part that we would complete.
So then you just don't have to come back to us to ask for money again?
Correct.
Okay. And what's your, you think it will not be exempt?
I don't, because of the type of project it is and the lot and the work that's being done, it's doubtful that we'll get an exemption on it. It's such a large-scale of a project, it's not a minor improvement, it's pretty significant.
Okay. All right, that was it.
Why would, it seems to me that the engineer's opinion, though, is that it could be exempt by reading this. What makes you think, why is your opinion a little bit different than the engineering that we're hiring?
Well, they, to be candid, I believe they're hedging their bets. They're hoping for the best, but planning for the worst, and that's all we're really doing. If some, by, if by the review and after assessing the issues and determining that we could potentially have passed that threshold, then obviously we don't have to use the money that we would be allocating on hold for the CEQA. But if it doesn't, then we already have it in place, and their bid is already in place to do that work. So, it's very common that, really both proposals suggested that. Well, I didn't give you the second one, but they're basically, it's always an if. If you do this, if you do that. If not, then they also have this other component that would resolve that issue, so.
Are you okay with that, Robin? Okay.
Hoping.
Absolutely.
Councilmembers Hannah, Grunmeyer, Bash, Mayor Protem Hoffman, Mayor Newton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 2F, Berwin?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment here that I'm happy to see that we're finally getting a program where we're going to be inspecting the fire hydrants, half of them one year and half of them the next, because I know myself and Mayor Newton, two years ago, were informed that there was probably about 15% or 20% of these things that didn't work at one time, and that's not a good idea, that's not good, safe practice for our citizens. And I don't like to see one of them be down for several weeks while you're getting parts to repair it, so I'm happy to see that this is going to be inspected, half of them one year and half of them the next. I think that's going to make everybody feel a lot safer. With that, I'll move to approve.
Under discussion on that item? Just a question on the cost not to exceed $150,000. These are on hydrants that we know about?
Well, this whole program is on hydrants and valves. It's not just hydrants.
Okay, hydrants and valves.
Or we maintain, yes.
That we have located?
Yes.
Okay, so we still have X amount of hydrants and valves that we have not exercised or located?
We've located, we've exercised everything we located, the things that we have not exercised, the ones we have not found. And we already know, after review of the data that they gave us and mapping it out, that there are areas that they were unable to locate, and we're going to work with them as they go through those areas, and mainly it's valves, it's not hydrants. The valves are the most hidden thing that was there. So, they, and so there's definitely areas where we know valves were hidden underneath the trails, et cetera, that we need to help them find and locate. Now, there certainly could be hydrants here or there. I don't anticipate to be many, because when you're going up and down the streets, unless the hydrant was removed completely and you never knew it existed, again, that means somebody stole it and it was turned off, we never replaced it, it's, we actually found quite a few that we never knew about when we went through the program. So, I have a high more confidence in that we're pretty good on the hydrants than the valves. Valves, I'm pretty sure there are several areas where they were unable to locate them because they didn't even know they were there.
And when we do locate those, those will be like charge time and material as against this 150, or it'll be additional to?
It's, this cost assumes a certain amount of valves and/or hydrants that will be new, and it's all under the same pricing plan, so there's a buffer in that.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Councilmembers Hannah, Grunmeyer, Bash, Mayor Protem Hoffman, Mayor Newton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We'll move into public comments. Cheryl, do we have any cards?
Yes, Mayor. Jeff Cahann?
I'll remind everybody, three minutes, please. You don't have, you don't have to go three minutes.
Who have you been talking to?
Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council and residents of Norco. I am here tonight representing the Parks and Recreation Commission. I am proud to announce with our summer approaching that our summer concerts are back up and active. Coming, our first concert is on June 9th. We will be, for our fifth year in a row, bringing back the high-energy, highly-interactive band Yard Sale. They are just a phenomenal band. We brought them back because they just are a great way to start our concert series off. That's on June 9th, and then on June 23rd, we will be having, again, by popular demand, the Crazy Kirk and the Hillbillies will be returning, and it will be Wear Your Overalls Night. So, come to the park, Pike's Peak Park, wear your overalls and enjoy some great bluegrass. We've got some other concerts coming up in July. We've got Heartache Tonight, which is a Eagles tribute band, July 21st. We've got Western Express, obviously country and western music. On August 4th, we've got a special treat, we've got a trio that's going to be doing kind of more of the acoustic 60s kind of songs. And then we're going to wrap things up on August 11th with a Journey tribute band. So, we've got a great lineup this summer, we've got some great sponsors. Let me mention them since I've got the time, because our good friends with Waste Management have stepped up and helped us again. AYSO, Region 37. We have Browning and Hemborg helping us out with our summer concerts this year, so we're glad to have them on board. Supervisor Tavelloni, again, is helping us through his supervisory district funds. Lions Club, of course, will be there, not only supporting us as a sponsor, but also cooking and having food and drinks for sale, snacks, and then also the Norco Mounted Posse is there to help us with security. And we've got some other sponsors that help us, just so that the residents understand that these concerts are not done with general funds, these are all sponsors that help make these concerts possible. So, thank the sponsors, come out, have a great evening. They're going to be on Fridays from 6:30 to 8:30, so we're keeping them at two hours, and we're looking forward to a great summer. So, what you guys need to do over the next couple of weeks is figure out who wants to be the introducing person for each week. So, that's your homework for, until next time. Thank you, and I have 40 seconds left.
Thank you, Jeff.
Pat Overstreet?
Good evening, Pat.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Doesn't anybody remember Montevani? That was my band when I was growing up. I'm here again to once more remind anybody that's in the audience that hasn't heard that we're having our 11th Annual Ranch Tour. Again, seven wonderful ranches participating with the red shirt ladies, that you can go donate at 8:00 in the morning and then come by the ranch tour for the rest of the day. We'd love to have you there. We didn't make it into Westways Magazine again this year, but the one year we did, we brought visitors from San Diego to Santa Barbara, and they still remember Norco, and I get phone calls requesting that I snail-mail them the flyer, which I do, even though we've got a website, some people still like that little, that page in the mail. But it's a wonderful event, showcases how we get to live, and the interesting thing is, besides two very large ranches with 100 jumper demonstrations and trail, we have Jules Farmer and Don Farmer's Half Acre, and it's amazing what they've done with that piece of property, to see what you can do with a split level, which is just phenomenal. So, I encourage you all to come out, it's a busy town. You know, if you're bored in Norco, it's your own fault, so hopefully we'll see you on the tour. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Marcy Kundy?
Good evening.
Hi, my name is Marcy. I've lived in Norco 30 years or so. I have a question. Nobody else is complaining here, but I have complained, and I don't know if this is the place to do it.
Absolutely.
I can't get anybody's, I'm concerned and confused about what code enforcement of Norco consists of. And that's my question. What does code enforcement enforce? Can anybody answer that?
Under public comments, we can't respond to you, but John can.
Oh, you can provide clarification.
Go ahead.
The City of Norco municipal code.
Okay. I have talked or left messages and pictures to the code enforcement officer twice in this last year, and I've asked him to call me. I never get a response. The ladies up here know me very well. I'm just concerned about how I go about getting some information from the code enforcement officer, why he won't contact me. I've left pictures, I don't know what more to do, and I'm asking you.
Okay. If you would, two choices, if you give your, once again, your name and your phone number to the city clerk, or if the meeting doesn't go too late, and you can hang with us, if you would meet with the city manager, Andy, right here, he will address your concerns.
Thank you.
But in case you have to leave, before you leave, give your information to Cheryl, and then Andy will call you tomorrow.
All right, thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Does that help you?
Yes. I just, all I ask is to, a response.
Absolutely.
That's all I'm asking for. Thank you.
Come by any time.
That concludes public comments.
Thank you, Cheryl. Item 5A.
I'll take that.
Andy, will you take that in the chief's absence?
Fire chief, yes. Mr. Mayor, this is the second resolution to be adopted by the city council regarding spring weed abatement on vacant parcels. The first action was taken by you back in March of 2017, and that action directed the fire chief to notify owners of vacant parcel in the city of Norco to abate the weed. The city, the fire chief did follow the procedures that are outlined in the government code, and all the owners of these vacant parcels were notified. They were given up until April 23rd to abate the parcels that are in question. That deadline has come and gone now, and the resolution before you is now to authorize the fire chief to use a city's own contractors to go out and abate the weeds on parcels that have not been abated as of April 23rd, 2017. The list of those parcels are attached to the staff report, and staff is asking that you direct the fire chief to go ahead and contract with city contractors to go out and abate this particular parcels. And the charge for the abatement by the city contractor includes the actual cost of the abatement plus 100% administrative fee charged for the city to have its contractor to go out and do this work. I'd like to point out that the list that is attached to this staff report may not be current. Certain property owners may have abated their parcel since April 23rd, and I know at least one has been abated. So the list that will actually take place will be those that are still outstanding to be abated. With that, staff is asking that you approve, adopt this resolution so that the fire chief can go ahead and use the contractor to weed abatement. And those who do not pay once the cost have been assessed, their property will be laid for collection.
Thank you, Andy. Does Council have any questions to staff?
I just have one, Mr. Mayor. Andy, and I don't mean to put John's block because Scott's not here, but how many of these 20-plus properties are repeat offenders every year?
They're generally, most of them.
All of them?
I mean, is it, because we're doing it cheaper than they can hire somebody, or they're just lazy, correct?
Some of these people are out-of-town property owners, and maybe that's more convenient for them to do it that way.
And I guess I'll ask John, is there anything that we can, there's nothing we can do to rewind?
Incentivize them?
Yes.
Now, unfortunately, we get to charge the actual cost of providing the service, and that's it.
Thank you.
On that note, because these, the majority are just repeat offenders that use us for a landscape service, how many cases do we have of these people that we had to file liens on the properties?
I don't know what that number, we can't.
Is it a number, or do they, the majority pay?
I'd say most of them.
A lot of them do pay.
Okay.
And so.
I'd be curious to see of the, the repeat customers that we have, do we file a lien every year on them? I guess is what I was trying to get to. Any other questions to staff? This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Any cards?
No cards on this item.
Thank you. I'll close the public hearing and bring it back for council discussion and action.
Will you approve?
Okay. Councilmembers Hannah, Grunmeyer, Bash, Mayor Protem Hoffman.
Yes.
Mayor Newton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item 5B, amendments to the city's general fee schedule for fiscal year 2017, 2018. Gina.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Before you are the amendments to the city's general fee and fine schedule for 17, fiscal year 1718. Every year in early spring, staff is requested to review the city's general fee and fine schedule to confirm it is conforming with current processes and costs of providing the service. Additionally, the fee schedule is adjusted by the annual CPI. This year, the CPI is 2.7%. This adjustment is necessary to reflect changes in the cost of providing the services. However, some fees are not recommended to be adjusted, adjusted to ensure that the fees are competitive with other jurisdictions. Then there are other fees that are recommended to be adjusted by amounts exceeding the CPI to adequately reflect the true cost of providing services. We have three new, three fees that are exceeding the CPI, and/or they're new. One is a sheriff's vehicle code violation fines, and there was an attachment indicating those fines were, that are being increased as a result of a survey that determined our fines were lower than local jurisdictions. And we have the planning department's accessory building use permit fee, which is proposed at $2,228. City staff is recommending a change to the fee structure associated with this permit process. The prior fee was based on 1.5% building code valuation and the cost of public noticing. The recommended fee is based on a full recovery of the cost of staff to perform the analysis outlined in Chapter 18.68 and the administrative policy for processing procedure and checklist for accessory building applications. The third fee is regarding the building maintenance division's new spider box and cable fee. This fee is associated with the Ingles, George Ingles Equestrian Event Center, where various events cover a wide range of performances, activities, shows, and events. Many of these events require electrical hookups and power to run to booths, motor coaches, stages, and various areas of the event's grounds. The city currently rents the equipment and programs it out to the client for a fee. This new fee would allow the city to purchase the equipment and pay back the general fund over a four-year term, as well as put money aside for future replacement. This will make the equipment readily available to meet the future demands of the event center. The equipment would also reduce the cost to the city for its own events for rental of equipment, and the fee will be $70 per spider box. And overall, the revenue we're anticipating will be minimal, but at mid-year, we will revisit any increased revenues and bring that for amendment. And if you have any questions regarding the fee schedule or the new fees.
Any questions for staff?
Mr. Mayor, I have a couple of questions. The first one's probably going to be directed to Brian. Brian, currently, the spider boxes that we rent, what's our rental cost on those and the cable? I know we have some of the cables, but just give me an idea. I just want to make sure we're in the same comparison.
Yeah. This fee actually will include the cable as well.
Okay.
So that comes with the, up to 150 feet of cable. So if we go out and rent it, we're paying actually a little higher rate than this. So this is actually, puts us right close to the market rate that we're actually doing, we're renting it for. So whatever we rent it for, we, currently, right now, we're passing that cost on. This allows us to have that inventory.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we're in the same market. I guess, the other part of my question, it goes to Steve. I've thought about this a lot, and we're going through fee schedules. When we have these buildings and people put these plans up together, we charge them a fee, correct? And is that fee, if their project gets denied, or somewhere along, yeah, if it gets denied, is it refundable?
No.
So if I put out $8,000, I'll say $8,000 for a fee and everything, is that pretty much with a CUP and everything? That's pretty reasonable?
Yes.
And so if it gets denied, I don't get any of that back, right?
No.
Thousand, it's not a city fee.
No. Well, for, for a CUP fee.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm just, I just know the ones I'm aware of. But are all cities done that way?
Absolutely.
They're all done that way, so you don't get it.
Because the city spends the money. I mean, it's not a profit. It's, the city, that's how the fee's determined, is the actual cost of the city. City performs all the services, and the applicant who generated the application is fazed if he didn't listen to staff or the planning commission or city council. Project was denied. That's true of every city, because the city actually incurs those costs.
The reason, I'm just trying to make it so we get, develop, you know, people don't get such a sour taste in their mouth when they get done. But if that's, all cities are doing it.
Yeah.
All right. That's it.
Now, on that note, Steve, if I made an application, and then halfway through, I pull the application, is there a refund there?
Yeah. What we do in a case like that, it, we have to sit down then and look at how much staff time's been expanded in the review and analysis. And the farther you get into the process, the less refunds you get. Once it gets to the decision-making body, there's no refund.
Okay.
That's the way it works.
Robin, did you have a question?
I have a few. Brian, I think a couple of them are going to go to you. Under Parks and Rec, under the general facilities and services, like your chairs, for example, you have a price range of $1.75. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the old one. $2 to $6. How are those ranges figured out, or where the costs come in?
Rectangle, 60-inch round table, depending on which, if the table, if the, so if we go to different-sized tables, then we, the price would change.
Right. But on the chairs, there's a price range, too. Do you have different sets of chairs up there?
No, we have one set of chairs, but in some cases, they need additional chairs. We rent chairs, and the range would change based on that rental.
Okay.
And we bring those in and then pass that cost on.
Okay. So it's the ones that you have to buy in addition to what you have on stock, on hand?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. The next one was under Parks and Rec, again, on your PA system. In the old one, you talked about $31-plus staff, and under new, it's $32. So are those easy to operate and don't require any staff time anymore?
We still are setting them up. So any time they, someone reserves a unit, we're the ones who put it up. So that covers our, our staff time to set that unit up.
Oh.
Take it back down and put it away.
Okay. And the next one was, it's under the fire department, and I don't know if you can answer this one for me or not, but it's the new one where it says event slash show grounds fee. Can you explain to me what that is?
Currently, right now, that, what happens is, is that we have a charge for event show grounds. So if there's an inspection fee for tents and things like that, that covers that cost.
Okay. So under that, it's not like a, it's for the whole entire event, the $625? It's for the fire department to come and conduct all onsite inspections for all offenders?
That's correct.
Okay.
Basically, this is, we put it in here because these are, it was in the general fee side of it.
Okay.
We've added it here so that it's part of this one for the Ingles, so it's the same fee, but we didn't have it at the Ingles ones. Patty coordinates with the fire department on all events up there. So every, we do, we schedule a walkthrough for those, so a permit is pulled, that permit is processed, and then we schedule with the fire department for those events at Ingles.
So that's covering all the staff time it takes to coordinate that, then?
That's correct.
Okay, perfect. That's it.
Just to add, there is a fee for each one as well, on top of that of the tents and stuff.
Any other questions to staff? This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Are there any cards?
No cards on this item.
Close the public hearing, bring it back for discussion and action.
Councilmembers Hannah, Grunmeyer, Bash, Mayor Protem Hoffman, Mayor Newton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 5C, rate adjustments proposed by Waste Management of the Inland Empire. Gina.
Honorable Mayor and council members, before you is the rate adjustment proposed by Waste Management for fiscal year 1718. Regarding the background on this item, the current franchise agreement between the city and Waste Management of the Inland Empire was executed on May 7th, 2014, and became effective July 1st, 2014. The 10-year term of the agreement will expire in the year 2024. The franchise agreement provides that Waste Management is entitled to receive rate adjustments for inflation based on the CPI and pass-through disposal cost increases. Under the agreement, the city is required to not unreasonably withhold rate adjustments. Any disputes, including the withholding of rate adjustments, are to be resolved before a third-party neutral hearing officer. The adjustments, pass-throughs, and contractual increases are as follows. The CPI adjustment is 1.89% for the next fiscal year. The pass-throughs for fiscal year 1718 are solid waste disposal costs, the Riverside County tipping fee has increased by 1.97%, green waste disposal costs, these fees increase by an overall, overall residential rate increase of .49, and the manure disposal cost component of the rate will also increase and translate into overall manure cart rate increase of $1.82, and manure bin rate increase of $7.39. The contractual increases between the city and Waste Management for the next fiscal year are, the franchise fee rate will increase from 14.74% to 16.32% for residential service. The commercial service franchise fee will remain at 17.9% for the remainder of the contract. Also, a reminder that included in the agreement is a five-year increasing rate for scout fees. Next fiscal year, the increase will be from the current year rate of $16.92 to $25.66 for scout service. Waste Management is also proposing an increase in the snapshot overage fee. And this is, the snapshot program works with customers to manage the problem of trash overflows and underserved accounts. Customers may receive a snapshot photo taken by drivers of the overage or other hazards with suggestions for service changes to remediate the issue. The goal of the program is to assist customers with establishing the appropriate service levels for their needs and to address container maintenance and safety issues. It is anticipated that with a higher rate, customers will be inclined to properly adjust their service levels to ensure that there are no future overflows which will help keep the city clean. Additionally, the snapshot program serves as a tool to help increase commercial recycling, which supports the city's AB 341 compliance efforts. Waste Management is requesting an increase of the current snapshot rate from $45.48 to $75. And I'd like to briefly go over organics recycling, a reminder for those listening. In response to AB 1826, California's mandatory commercial organics recycling law, in 2016, the city adopted organic rates. AB 1826 requires businesses and multifamily properties with five or more units that generate eight cubic yards of organic waste on a weekly basis to recycle said waste on and after a deadline date of April 1st, 2016. That law has changed, and it's, has been extended to include businesses and multifamily properties with five or more units that generate four cubic yards of organic waste per week to recycle their, their waste. The city and Waste Management continue to conduct educational outreach to inform customers of the regulation and to encourage customers to request waste audits to determine if they are subject to the regulation, and to ensure that they have all the information they need to participate in the commercial organics recycling program. Organics waste means food waste, green waste, landscape and pruning waste, non-hazardous wood waste, and food-soiled paper waste that is mixed in with food waste. Waste Management representatives are here to answer any of your questions regarding the pass-throughs or the proposed snapshot fee.
Thank you, Gina. Does council have any questions to staff, or of our Waste Management representative? Robin?
Good evening. How are you? Okay, so I have a question on your snapshot overage, too. Number one, how often does that happen? And then number two, when somebody gets this snapshot, what kind of support do they receive from Waste Management, or how does the process go?
The purpose of the snapshot program is to identify commercial customers who have an overflow of their bin. I mean, many of us have gone to retailers on the weekends, and they have an abundant amount of waste. And so the goal is to
amount of waste, and so the goal is to take a picture of, of the bin that's over full own. And if it's a one-time issue, the customers just pay it and they kind of manage their account, but we do have some customers who it's cheaper to get a snapshot than to adjust or add a recycle bin. So the goal for us to ask for an increase is to really have customers identify what the right service level should be. A lot of the times, one of the reasons, we, obviously for the safety of our drivers, when, you know, they pick, when they pull out the bin, things fall on them, or when we're carrying the bin over to unload it, you know, it creates a mess, or sometimes what we will see is that we can't even access the bin because there's so much, you know, trash around it. It also kind of, one of the things I mentioned is that it'll, it tends to be a nuisance for the city and the customers and the residents because it looks dirty and it's not maintained, so our goal is to let customers know that this is happening. Sometimes we have a lot of commercial customers who the property is managed by someone outside, and so what they'll do is the driver takes a picture, they get a letter indicating why they're receiving the, this letter, and it has an actual picture of the bin that was taken. So that way, they're able to identify that indeed this is on their property and this is what the situation is. So the majority of the time, customers do call and adjust their service, whether it be adding an additional day, maybe they just have one, one-time-a-week service and they'll add a second time-a-week service, or they'll add a recycling. A lot of the things that we have noticed on those pictures is there are a lot of boxes, and they're cardboard boxes, and so that's one of the reasons why we're hoping that with the increased fee, customers will add recycling to their service so that we can have those items not be going to the landfill, thus meeting our AB 341 requirement.
One other question for you. So there's a shopping center in town that's finally getting tenants, and it's filling up, and I've noticed, because I go to that shopping center every day, that the dumpsters and stuff are overfilled. So when there's multiple tenants in a shopping center like that, how does Waste Management go about taking care of an issue like that?
So each bin has, it depends on how the, that shopping center divides their bins, so if there's a bin, the bin that has that issue is identified to the person who is, who that bin belongs to, and so that's how it's addressed.
Okay.
And that could be also, for example, maybe their tenant on the side, that one's filled, so they go to this one, so it kind of brings attention to the shopping center.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Verone.
On the same note, I noticed a lot of people overfill the two-wheel carts, and it overflows out into the deal. Is that, does your driver snapshot that also, or?
We don't do it for residential. What we do do is we do tag them when they're overflowing, and we see that a pattern, we'll, we'll tag the cart saying that you need to make sure that your, your lid is able to close completely.
Okay, thank you.
So Glenda, on the snapshot, if it's overflowing, your driver takes a photo of it, does he still pull the bin and dump it when it's overflowing?
Yeah, we still service it.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
And then that snapshot, that letter, does that go right to like our finance department? Do we show that as, we bill that customer that month for that photo?
So we.
At an automatic process?
Yes, operate, our, our team sends that information to billing, and they make those fees reflective on the customer's account, but in addition to that, the customer receives a letter from Waste Management saying that they're, that charge that they see is attributed to this letter.
Still having a hard time with, why will an additional $30 cost make somebody increase their service to twice a week or three times a week or whatever, or?
A lot of the times, it's not maybe perhaps.
Motivation there.
A lot of the times, it might not be necessarily increasing service, but it might be increasing your bin size, you know, so it just brings awareness to the customer in saying, this is, you know, if I get a letter and I see and I pay, I make sure that it doesn't happen again, but we do have customers who are repeat, you know, I want to say that this just happens more often, so. What we do too is, once we give the letter, our customer service contacts them to try to, you know, make, you know, try to understand what their service needs are and how we could help them remedy the situation.
Do you have customers that you do a photo every week, or?
Mm-hmm.
Jesus.
And, and one of the things that we, obviously, we have to, the city has to show an increase in recycling, and a lot of the times, like I mentioned before, a lot of the materials that are overflowing are on flattened cardboard boxes, so it's evident that they need a recycling program in place.
So let's say you have a customer that every pickup's overflowing, and you're taking a snapshot every time you go out there, at what point does that become a code enforcement issue? Yeah, or does it? I'm sorry.
Well, if it is brought, if it is brought to the city's attention as a code violation or somebody complains about it, the city staff will investigate, found that, and code enforcement can cycle.
Do we do that now? Notify?
I know that we provide the information to billing for the charges to be reflective on the customer's bill, but I don't believe we have pursued it to code enforcement.
I mean, is there a way we could, with your usual suspects, is there some way that could be communicated to code enforcement also?
Definitely. We can look at the situation that's there and identify if it's chronic.
Ultimately, it really depends upon what the nature of the violation is, I mean, I'm not sure that even a couple of times putting boxes that are just too high, whether that constitutes a nuisance and violation of our code.
I'm not talking about the onesie-twosies, it's the.
Well, even consistently, if that's what it is, we still have to show that it's a nuisance, just being a violation of our code beyond simply exceeding the capacity of the bin. I mean, if there's organic material falling out on the street, that's something we do something about.
Yeah, some of the pictures do have trash outside of the area, too. There could be a mattress that was left there by someone who illegally dumped it, so, and that's one of the reasons why it's a good program, because it does bring attention to the property manager and they're more, they have more surveillance, so it, it's a good program, but we're, we're seeing some of the people continue to just maintain the pattern, and that's the concern that we have.
Thank you, Glenda. Any, Ted?
I have, on this snapshot overage fee, is that basically commercial?
Yes, it's only commercial.
No residential?
No.
Okay, so I just want to make sure we're not going to, your drivers wouldn't consider it overage if during green waste, the guy's trimming bushes, they can't shut the green container anymore, and so it's only res, it's only commercial.
It's only for commercial customers who are the ones that have to be compliant with AB 341.
Okay, all right. I do have one other question on that, and unless Kevin has something on the snapshot thing, is could you give us an update on your manure? I know you gave one to us, but on the manure-to-energy program, I, every year, I, since we're renewing this, we kind of like to get an update on it. So what's going on?
As we discussed in our meeting, our annual meeting, we have been looking at different technologies, however, we're still trying to assess what's the best technology for us. We recently just renewed our contract with Veramotis for three additional years for our manure to go there, and so we feel that those three years will allow us to confirm the site, the technology that we'll be using to move the project forward. We have, as you mentioned, some technology that has been brought to our attention from other states, but as you know, California is a very special state, so it's just a matter of finding the right permits and the right project to invest that amount of money in, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I do have something on the snapshot, so it's just commercial, but then there's some residential that have the large bins, right? Is it just the large bin? Is that what indicates?
It's just for commercial trash. It's not for manure or anything like, it's just basically businesses.
You know, to jump from $45, $48 to $75 is a big jump. I get what you guys are talking about, but one of the things that people don't realize is we do live in the state of California, they do realize it, and when you're a business, you're getting, everybody thinks that the small businesses can carry all this stuff, and they're just slammed with $30 here, $50 there, I mean, it just jumps all the time. I mean, I sign, I sign 31 checks every two weeks, and so it's, it's very, very difficult. All it would take is somebody who decides, and we've had this where people dump stuff in our dumpster, and let's say they dump a television, and, no offense, but Waste Management's position is that's our problem, and so we have to take care of it. If somebody comes along, we have a neighbor that likes to, in the middle of the night, likes to dump a bunch of stuff from his construction site into our dumpster, he thinks it's funny. We don't say anything, but I go out and it's three feet high, so I have to pull it all off, I have to lay it onto the side, then it, it's a problem. I understand your side of it, too. I'm wondering if we could maybe not jump 30, can we jump 15? Or are we contractually obligated to, so in other words, we go to $60, let's say?
We're, I mean, we're open to whatever suggestion you, obviously, it would be us going back and discussing the matter, yeah.
I mean, that's just a big jump to go from 45 to 75.
I know there's finance, and I know there's a reasoning behind why that number was identified based on the, you know, our area and stuff, so I would have to come back and probably, I mean, take that into consideration and come back to you.
I mean, I'm fine with the rest of the contract, I'm fine with it, but it's just this, I just think is a little bit, it's just a big jump.
Well, like I said, our goal is so that they don't have to have that fee because it'll bring awareness, and one of the things that we do offer is our lock-in lid, so that you do have a lock on your bin and people are not allowed to throw things that aren't, you know, that don't belong to your waste.
Okay, well, anyway, it's just my thoughts. Thanks.
Any other questions? Thank you, Glenda.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing, I'll open the public hearing. Cheryl?
No cards on this item.
Okay. I'll close the public hearing, bring it back for discussion and action.
I am happy to hear that they're moving forward on their alternative waste disposal program. I was happy to hear that.
So what do you want to do, I guess the hang-up's on this snapshot overage fee?
Mr. Mayor, I personally am okay with the overage fee, and here's why, because the shopping center that I go to, it's trash generated from a restaurant and a collection area and that kind of stuff, and I think it's a matter of the tenants not talking to each other or management not paying attention, and when it's all overflowing into the parking lot, it's not clean, it doesn't keep the shopping center looking professional, and I also live behind a shopping center where this can be an issue as well, and when you walk down the back alley and there's trash everywhere because tenants aren't communicating or management isn't taking care of what they need to do, it makes the city look dirty, and if it's a matter of working with Waste Management or talking with your tenants or the property manager to get a solution, I don't have a problem with this because I see this as, we're going to work with you because they didn't say they're going to do it on the first time. You know, that they'll work with you, come up with an idea how to get it fixed, so I see this as, it's punitive, you need to take pride in your shopping center, your commercial area, and keep it clean, and if you don't, then you're going to pay a fine. Basically, it's the way that I see it. So I personally don't have a problem with it. I don't want our shopping centers to look like LA or the different places where there's trash everywhere. Our shopping centers, for the most part, are very clean and well-kept, and I think this is a key piece to keeping them that way. So that's my opinion.
With that, Gina, so the first snapshot, there's no fee?
I believe there's a fee the first time on the snapshot.
I want to make sure I understood, Robin or Glenda?
Well, that's how we bring awareness with them receiving the letter, as this is what, this is your, it's kind of like a citation, you know, like your first ticket, and if you, and that's why we follow up with a call to them to let them know, you know, we don't want this to continue, how can we help you to provide the best service for your commercial needs?
Is that a big thing, and maybe that would help satisfy Kevin's concerns, is that if this is the first time it happens, it's a warning, second time it happens, it's $75?
Well, the snapshot program is a national program, so I would have to come back and see how we can adjust it for our customers here in Norco.
I guess I would like to see it where, like the first time, because like I said, the shopping center where I see there's an issue right now, it's got a bunch of new tenants, so I'm sure they're still trying to figure things out and work things out, so, you know, they're obviously not a repeat offender, so maybe the first time, it is a warning or something like that, and then after the warning, it goes to this.
And usually, it's kind of like the recycle, like with the residential, it's kind of like our drivers kind of know this is a, this customer isn't normally doing this, but if I see a pattern, they'll take a picture, so it's kind of like we already give them, you know, we service it, because technically, we're not supposed to service it because there's things that are coming out. Also, one of the things that I wanted to bring up is that in addition to this, it's, like you mentioned, it's trash, but it's also a health issue, and that's one of the reasons why for us, it's important that our customers maintain good bins, because when you see a tenant who continues to have this, the likelihood is that they have a really dirty bin, and perhaps it has pests and other items, so our goal is to bring awareness to them to change it, and also in addition, we do offer our recycling coordinator to go and meet with the property managers, walk the property, provide literature for the tenants who are either new or who haven't been made aware of the things that are recyclable and what they could do to amend their situation.
And I guess on that note, then, you know, we have a couple new shopping centers coming in, obviously, management, and that are not new, but is there some kind of a welcome package or something that Waste Management offers to these people? Because, you know, there's services available, obviously, is what I'm hearing from you about recycling coordinator and all that kind of stuff. I'm just wondering how much people know about that or if that service is available to them or as a property manager, is that something they automatically know, oh, I'll just call Waste Management and they'll?
We, we have been working with the city and providing literature for, like we said, AB 341 and AB 1826, and also if a customer contacts us, we'll do a site audit. What we could do is obviously partner with the city in getting a new business list, and we could provide them with some kind of a welcome to Norco information and indicate that they're more than welcome to request a waste assessment.
Okay, thank you.
If, if approved, this snapshot overage fee goes into effect July 1st?
Of next year.
Of this?
Of this year, sorry, yes.
Of next year?
No, 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 sorry, sorry, yes, yes.
Okay.
I'm thinking, yeah, something else, yeah.
Okay, so July 1, 2017. Is there any way that in this process, and I agree with Robin, is we need to make this an educational program?
Yeah, we could, we could do a campaign.
With our commercial thing, campaign, this is the end of May, you got the whole month of June, and I really like the idea of utilizing the locking devices, the locking units for those commercial, because she's right, they, everybody drives through, they see a dumpster, boom, it goes in there, and it just, it's annoying, and so I, I think if you, if we use this next 30 days in June, then they can't say they didn't get it, but I'd really like to see a real strong educational approach to these businesses. I think it's, otherwise, I agree with Robin, it's not fair to get slapped for somebody.
We'll be more than happy to work with the city and making like a, I mean, we have plenty of pictures that we could obviously, you know, utilize as educational material, obviously, without identifying what business it is, and, you know, we could use social media to let people know that this is something that is an issue in the city, and like you said, give them some educational information prior to the fee implementation.
Well, basically, it's under AB 341, so you don't have much choice. You got to take care of it. You got to take care of it. All right, thank you.
Steve?
Yes?
What do we do planning-wise on commercial projects when we condition trash enclosures? Do we also condition the size of a trash enclosure to incorporate recycling and organics?
Yes, they're conditioned to provide two bins, one for recycling, one for trash, and the number of trash enclosures is based upon the size of the center.
Okay, and that all works with your program? Glenda?
I mean, yes, now, obviously, if we have, we have to, I would think, identify those customers that would have to have organics implementation as well, so that would be an additional bin that they would have to consider when planning.
And so you, from planning standpoint, if it's like a restaurant go-in or something like that, you would then have three bins?
The, our city standard is two bins. The, maybe what we need to do is, is coordinate with you to, for organics for restaurants, because right now our standard is for two bins, one recycling and one for trash.
For big solid waste, but with, with the organics, does that, can that be in the recycling bin?
No, it would have to be a separate container, yeah.
Right.
I think it could kind of go similar to how we had to implement an additional recycle bin, and a lot of the businesses that were already established, you know, are kind of grandfathered in, but definitely organics is one of the commodities that you would want to implement in a new development because it is a different type of waste. But we could work with the city and giving them some information as far as our, our options and equipment for that program. And the, I'm, one of the businesses that is actually going to start their organic waste is Miguel's, so they're slowly, you know, contacting us and, and trying to find out how they could implement a program with them, with us.
I guess just the other thing, I'm not, we're so much referring to the, the larger businesses, I'm referring to the mom-and-pop businesses, because, I don't know, you know, the malls and the, the Boot Barn Centers and stuff, they actually have advocates, they've got enough money that they're able to go out and they're able to fight for themselves. But the people that have no voice are your small businesses. Nobody represents them, and they just keep piling fees on top of them, and it's a very different animal, and yet that's your largest hiring base in the entire United States, and nobody pays attention to them, they just keep slapping fees on top of them, and I just kind of have a problem with that. I'm not saying that you guys are, you know, doing that so much, but that's, that's my problem. Big difference between a place that has a bunch of rentals in it. I mean, I, I ran into a woman just the other day, owns a restaurant, and they're going to triple her rent, and she was in tears, and I mean, it's very, very difficult to operate a business nowadays if you have between five and fifteen employees, or two employees or three employees. Something like this could be, you know, a big deal, so that's just kind of my thought on it.
Okay, anyone care to make a motion or alternate motion?
Councilmembers Hannah, Grunmeyer, Bash, Mayor Protem Hoffman, Mayor Newton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Okay, we'll go into item 5D, tentative parcel map, 37-288.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. This is a proposed tentative parcel map to take two lots that equal 1.86 acres and re-divide them into three lots to coincide with an existing commercial strip center on the site. This is east of Hamner Avenue, north of Fifth Street, between the Hamner and, and the freeway, north of Bob's Big Boy. The, the three lots would accommodate the one existing strip center, and then two additional lots for a fast food restaurant and another commercial strip center that was approved by the planning commission on, when it reviewed the tentative parcel map. So those two projects have been approved. The tentative parcel map requires approval by the city council, and the, and the planning commission has recommended approval. The proposed lots all meet the minimum code requirements with the exception of the lot depth. Because of the existing configuration of the lot between Hamner Avenue and the freeway, it cannot meet the lot depth requirement, and a variance has already been approved addressing that issue, and the map is consistent with, with that variance. So the planning commission has recommended approval. Staff is concurring with that recommendation, and I will conclude my presentation and answer any questions.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions, staff?
Steve, you and I had this discussion earlier. This fits, I mean, that whole parcel over there, it fits in with the hospitality uses that we're trying to create in that area, even though it is fast food.
Yeah, and one of the problems, if you, if you look at your map, one of the problems with the lot is, this is where the lot gets its skinniest, where it, Hamner Avenue kind of angles in, and the freeway angles in, and this is the narrowest part of the lot, really doesn't have, this is probably about the best use you're going to be able to get on this narrow part of the lot.
Yeah, I, it is, it's, I went back over and looked at it, and it just, I just, fast food and, it's one of those things. I hope it's a high-end fast food place, but it's just, that's, that's my concern, is are we utilizing that property to the best uses? And I know we can't direct the property owner, I know you have tried for more lodging and that, high-end restaurants, but it's just one of those things, this is, he owns it, so...
And, and the property owner has worked with us, and he, he, we are marketing, he's, he's got one more vacant pad, and we're marketing that to potential hotel developers, and he's aware of that and he agrees with it. This part of the property is just so narrow, nothing, and the hotel would be like a blade, it wouldn't work there.
Okay, all right, thank you for your questions, thank you.
Steve, I had noticed that the planning commission had concerns of big trucks.
Yes.
Unloading, and I've only seen it a few times up by Starbucks, not saying it's them, but at night, where they'll park on Hamner Avenue, and that kind of jams stuff up a little bit. Was planning satisfied when, I mean, looking at this, it seemed commissioner, Vice Chair Wrigler had the most concerns about the parking, how was that addressed?
They were satisfied because being in the center of the property, this has got access to driveways. The problem with Starbucks is, in order to deliver without stopping, which stopping on the street is illegal, but the problem is catching them doing it. The, it's...
Wait a minute, Starbucks, they're parked at six and a half, I know we have patrols that go by there.
No, I know, but the problem is, the temptation with Starbucks, because it has a dead-end drive aisle, they would have to pull in, back down the dry, the parking lot in order to get out of the, and it's, it's just a temptation for, for them to stop on the street, because they can run in and out, get their delivery done before someone catches them, so that's the reality. But down here, they were satisfied because there's driveways where you can loop in and out of the property.
Any other questions, staff? This is a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Are there any cards?
On this item?
Dan, you didn't even want to speak, even though it cost you an extra trash enclosure bin? How are you?
Good, good evening. My name is Dan Henson, I'm the project architect. I'm here to answer any questions you may have. I apologize, we tried to get our civil engineer here this evening, but to late notice, we were unable to get him to attend, so if you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to try to answer them to the best of my knowledge as the architect and not the engineer.
Any questions? Berwin?
No.
Okay. You're in good shape, Dan.
All right.
Good to see you again.
Thank you.
Another card, no, close the public hearing, bring it back for just, and action.
Was that a second count? Okay. Councilmembers Hannah, Grunmeyer, Bash, Mayor Protem Hoffman, Mayor Newton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we'll move into item 6A, discussion action items, approval of salary and benefits, resolution for management personnel.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this is a recommendation for you to adopt resolution number 2017-28, approving executive management salary resolution for fiscal year 2017, 2018, as well as 2018, 2019. The recommended adjustment consists of a 3% increase in the salary range for all executive management positions for fiscal year 2017, 18, as well as another 3% for fiscal year 2018, 2019. This recommended adjustment is consistent with the same adjustments that you approved for the general employees as well as middle management, confidential and professional employees for the upcoming two fiscal years. Other than this 3% adjustment to the salary ranges, no other proposals before you for increase to, to benefits. So the projected fiscal impact for this fiscal year 2017, 2018, as a result of this recommended adjustment, is $42,000, and the impact for the next fiscal year 2018, 2019 will be included in the operating budget, and those budgets are done. With that, I'm...
Thank you, Andy. Does council have any questions? Surely, though this is a discussion item, are there any cards?
No cards on this item.
Okay.
It's a discussion item. Councilmembers Hannah, Grunmeyer, Bash, Mayor Protem Hoffman, Mayor Newton.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Item 7, city council, city manager, staff communications. Kevin? Ted?
I forgot about this earlier, the salute on the Memorial Day, make sure if you are a veteran, you sign up for the continual salute from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Memorial Day at the Veterans Memorial. Thank you.
Robin?
Yes.
Berwin?
Yes, sir.
Andy?
Yes.
Lieutenant, tell me what you did last night.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of city council. We had a busy night last night. Unfortunately, I can't give many details, I'll just follow what the press release issued, and basically we had an armed robbery at a local business in the city of Norco. Our deputies, one of them in the back room there, developed some significant leads that led to the direct identification of the suspect, and from that, we were able to locate the suspect in the nearby city of Corona. And once we got there, we were able to eventually confirm the suspect was inside the residence but did not want to surrender. So one of the advantages of contracting with the sheriff's department is the many services that we have available in a situation like that, so I was on scene, I got on scene with the deputies there, and we, they briefed me on what we had, including both sergeants, both Norco sergeants, and we basically ran it up the chain and activated our SWAT team. With our SWAT team came our hazardous device team, which included the robot, our hostage negotiations team, our aviation crew who flew over and provided overwatch to make sure we were all safe, and I want to give credit to the city of Corona Police Department for their assistance. We did do some evacuations for some nearby residences. It was a long night, but the good news is, nobody was hurt, we were able to take the suspect into custody. So it ended well for us, and we did, and basically closed out a robbery that occurred in the city of Norco.
You look tired.
Thank you for noticing, I appreciate that.
Did you want to comment anything on our meeting on 4th of July?
Sure, and I think everybody by this point has heard me talk about this in terms of what our planning is, and basically what I've, I've narrowed it down to, what we've narrowed it down to, it, it's education first, followed by enforcement, and we're working very, very hard to be upfront with the educational aspect, and the reason is, was we hope that neighbors and the community, the citizens, talk to each other and they police themselves, so we don't have to be involved. And the educational information that has been so well-done at this point, basically talks about the devastation and the trauma that's caused to our animals, and we all know that Norco is an animal-keeping lifestyle here, we all have dogs, horses, goats, chickens, a variety of other animals, and we know firsthand how traumatized they can be with the sounds of fireworks, so we're working very hard to educate the community through social media platforms, signage posted in the city, in the water bill, we're working closely with our, collaborating closely with the fire department, code enforcement, animal control. I want to thank the mayor, the city manager for their support in moving forward, but we've also worked, if the educational aspect does not work, and we know we will never 100% be able to stop fireworks, as, as much as we wish we could, we know that that's just not a possibility. But we do have an increase in penalties for the fireworks, $1,000 for the safe and sane, and anything that's significant, more significant beyond your typical safe and sane is going to be a $2,000 fine. So we're hoping that based on the educational aspect and the enforcement with the knowledge that you're going to face a thousand to $2,000 fine, that we'll get a lot more compliance and hopefully reduce the fireworks issues that we've seen in years previous. Thank you.
So is that, is that per safe and sane, or is it just one, is it, let's say they're shooting off five of them?
Five safe and sane fireworks, so basically, it's not, it's, we look at it at the totality of the circumstance.
So if they light up 50 cherry bombs, it's not $100,000?
Well, so it depends on the circumstance in the investigation. If you have 50 different people doing it at the same time, then technically, I suppose, it would be 50 different counts. It just depends on the circumstance. If they're, they're together and they're lighting off a number of fireworks, we're probably going to treat it as one incident.
We could make some money at this, Andy, have people do firework parties.
Good job, Eric.
Lieutenant, is, I know in years past that you guys have worked close with the fire department and the different fire marshals, will they have different firemen on duty that night, driving around and checking?
We're still on the planning stages and staffing stages, we are in discussions with the, with the fire department regarding that specific issue. We don't have the 100% commitment yet, I know they're checking with their chain of command, so we hope to hear back shortly.
Okay, thank you.
And I think our next scoping meeting is next month.
Yes, yes.
And we'll have more information with Cal Fire and, and city staff also with that. Thank you, Eric. Gina? Don't you think you ought to talk about your award a little bit?
Yeah.
Talk about that?
That's something I can do, that. So the city of Norco, for the 14th straight year running, was recognized with a certificate of excellency in financial reporting. This certificate is awarded to cities that demonstrate their highest standard of financial reporting and financial management. It's not just presenting the typical financial statements at the end of the year, the city's annual financial report, which is considered a comprehensive annual financial report, goes above and beyond what is required under generally accepted accounting principles to include a lot of information that residents and the users of financial statements can find useful in terms of obtaining information with respect to their financial condition and the financial operation. the financial operations of the city. Putting a statement that meets that criteria takes a lot of work, not just from finance department staff, but the entire city staff. And it's a year-long process that city staff has to undertake, and is again, a demonstration of the care that city staff takes, and the pride that they take in managing the financial affairs of the city. I think this, it also helps to improve the city's credit rating, so it's an accomplishment, and I think city staff should be proud of that, of this accomplishment.
Congratulations.
Thank you. But I will make just one comment, in that the one person who achieved that initially was Andy, he's been here 14 years, so it's a significant achievement to take a city from not winning it, to actually achieving the award and maintaining it. I've humbly been here a year and a half, and of course, we had Olivia Hoyt, who recently retired, and we're in the process of hiring a new manager. I'll be excited to tell you about that next time, hopefully. But it is a pleasure and an honor to work for a city that's financially driven with this kind of leadership, as well as your own. So thank you, and I'll tell staff as well.
Thank you.
I should mention Melinda Van as well, who does quite a bit, in fact, I have the audit schedule right here with her name all over it, so...
Great.
It's wonderful to work here with them.
Good job. Brian?
I just wanted to make you know, make it known, and give kudos to Congressman Calvert and his office. I have a response from the United States Post Office about replacement of community mailboxes. They are underway in doing that, and they are ordering the more, I guess, higher-tech ones that are vandalized-proof, according to him. And he would be happy to meet with some of our council members to talk about their programs, so I'll try and set that up and provide more information with you, but I received that call, so I wanted to just let you know, Congressman Calvert, give him big kudos for that.
Good job. Steve?
Yes.
Chad? City Clerk?
I just briefly want to comment on that the City Clerk's office is accepting applications to serve on the various city commissions, and on the Economic Development Advisory Council. So we have about four weeks left in that recruitment period. Recruitment information, applications, everything's available on the city's website, as well as at the City Clerk's office. So I encourage residents to come and ask questions and apply.
Thank you, Cheryl. Anything else, Andy?
Not really.
So excited, we're going to get out of here before 9 o'clock. Thank you, everyone. Good night, we're adjourned.